Every year for projects that were coming up and do exactly what you did, meet with the fire department, meet with Louie. And.
Did we lose you, Vinnie? Erica?
I'm here.
I don't hear Vinnie.
And that gets expensive also. But like I said, my main concern is if we can keep a flat budget with no tax increase, I don't think there's a problem with this.
I think we can. I believe I'd like to go to the Board of Finance one night with Nancy and Lou and Rob. And kind of explain, you know, what we kind of set up here and why and why it's so important to really plan for the future.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of who's on the Board of Finance, but I don't know if they would remember us putting money away every year. To be able to buy, well, I don't know if they were around when we bought the newest dump truck, but that money was put away. A few years ahead of time. So I mean, this is something that the Board of Finance should should realize that they have to do this.
Erica?
No, it all seems reasonable, so.
Okay, let me skip to the beginning of the budget. Like I said, anytime to stop me.
Okay.
Ask me. You can see that page miscellaneous and education.
Yep.
All right, I had originally put in under capital non recurring 500. I kind of feel comfortable with 400, based on that budget that we came up with for capital. What your feelings are.
Well, the one I'm looking at right now under miscellaneous. The first page shows 300 in there.
Well, that's what the Board of Finance has put in. There's under requested, which would be the Board of Selectment, I had 500. They're still talking about it, they had not seen the new capital non recurring budget yet.
Okay.
You'd be comfortable with 400?
Yeah.
I mean, it does depend on what the bottom line ends up being for the entire budget.
Yeah.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
And will the Board of Finance make that determination of how to keep a flat budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And the rest were kind of, they are what they are. Contingency, given that we don't have a contract this year to worry about, we're not looking at retro monies going back. Probably could drop it to 50. That's really up to the Board of Finance, what they feel comfortable with. Pension, pension.
Yeah, I see emergency service pension, $10,000.
That was old, that was. With the, the new fire company was looking to start up that pension again, they haven't haven't gotten to that point. And that was supposed to be feeding that new pension, but they don't have that yet.
Next time you talk to Rob or the President of the Fire Department. I would suggest I'm starting to look into a pension for our volunteers. I mean, we had something with the former fire department and I don't see any reason why they shouldn't deserve a pension. Well, I would think maybe that would be something that they could start looking into.
They should, definitely.
I mean, every other town around us does a pension or a stipend. Just my thought.
Okay. I had put in 30,000 for week control. I'm not sure how you guys feel about that, they did knock it down to 25 already.
Which field contributing this year?
10,000. And White Memorial does their, I think 12,500 or something, plus the in-kind services with their biologist Jamie Fisher.
Right.
I'll leave it as it is, or?
Yeah, the 25 probably leave it at this.
Yeah.
Okay. These will go pretty quick here, Board of Finance has not changed. They did talk to the auditor and that number should be good for next year, the 22,000.
Yeah, that that was interesting when the the co-chairman of the Board of Finance said. He spoke with the audited company and he said that they would hold the price at 22,900, I think it was.
Right around 22,000, I believe.
Yeah, and then he said he got on the phone and he talked to two other firms. So. Our, our policy is that we send stuff out to bid, so we're gonna not adapt that part of the policy anymore.
That would be up to the Board of Finance if they're bidding that, they may be comfortable with the existing and continue with it.
What's our town policy called for?
It depends on the situation.
Back in January, when they knew this was coming up. They could have put an ad and did this work ahead of time. I mean, to say that we're not going to put this out to bid, I mean, I realize we can carry to 22,000, but.
If they want to stay with the current auditor, they don't, they don't have to put it out to bid, right?
Well, I think what.
You shouldn't have to.
I didn't think so, and I don't have any issue with, I'm assuming talking about Chris, I don't know when he said that, but I certainly have no issue with him calling. Just to make sure they're in the ballpark before they make the decision to carry on.
Well, it wasn't so much that they called him, but then they called two other companies.
Yeah, to make sure, I mean, I would do that, just to make sure that the price seems fair, and if it didn't, I would assume then they would put it out to bid.
Right, well, I mean, that's not how a bidding process goes, but if you guys are happy with it, that's fine.
But because it wasn't a bidding process.
Okay.
Right, assessment appeals. I spoke to Betsy and she felt 1,000 is fine for legal and they're not really expecting anything, but it's good to have something there. In case there's some appeals. Fire Department. And this is where we get into wages for non-union employees. I had put in, although the Board of Finance hasn't seen this yet since we just approved the contract. I have put in the increase in wages for the clerk. I think we need to come to an agreement or understanding, what should we do for the non-union employees for next year? Do we, do they get a raise, do they not get a raise? They'd be looking at 2.25% increase.
What's the total dollar amount if there is a raise?
Uh, you know, I don't know. For one employee for this one. He goes from $15 an hour to $15.73 an hour.
What did the union say about their raises?
They, I asked them if they'd forego the raise for the 2021 and they decided not to do that.
I just can't, I mean. That's unfortunate. But I, I don't know, I can't see not giving raises to the non-union employees, it feels like punishing them for not being in the union.
You're kind of looking at maybe four employees.
Yeah.
No, I think Erica's right, they should not be punished.
It's too bad that the union. Didn't forego the raises, I think that would have been a nice gesture for the town, but.
Well, the problem is now that if you look at the fire department, I'm only looking at that one and I'm not picking on the fire department. But it looks like like a little over 4,000 more than last year. In their overall budget.
Last year was what, 12,000, 100,000, 112,230. And we're looking at 112,931, so you're looking at $700.
I thought, what's 116,746?
That was before we knew the exact cost of the insurance. We had it in there for 21,960, now it's 18,000.
All right, I thought they made the adjustment.
Yeah, there was an adjustment, we thought it was going to be a 3% increase, but it actually went down.
Yeah, yeah, but I thought the Board of Finance that night made the adjustment.
Well, what they have for approved without the increase for the clerk is 112,786. You go to the last column for, for some reason they use the approved column, I don't know why.
All right.
So you're really looking at almost a flat budget, $700 more.
Oh, okay, all right.
So you want, you feel you want to keep the increase in for the clerk for that 71 cents or 73 cents?
I agree, I agree with Erica.
Okay. Anything else on this page at all? They didn't have a lot of questions for them.
No, they didn't, the only, the only thing, like you said. And it's hard to not having a spreadsheet to see what was spent up to this date. Versus what, what's, what they're asking for, OSHA mandate is up $1,000. I don't know what they're spending on OSHA mandate, if there's any room to knock that down a little bit.
It's all the ladder testing, hose testing, mask fit, flow tests, air packs, air quality tests.
But like I said, I don't know what they've spent so far this year. It was hard to see if that's a reasonable figure or not.
OSHA, they've spent about $3,000 so far this year.
Right.
Anything else on fire department?
No, I don't have anything.
No.
Fire marshal, the same as last year. Beach and rec. Up slightly. 44,755 to 45,300. Trying to see where she, what the increase was.
The only thing I saw that stood out was.
Oh, electric.
Concerts is 5,000. And I don't know if she's going to be able to have. That many concerts this year with what's going on.
Yep.
You know, it's not a big deal, it's just something to look at, but the thing that really stuck out was. I don't know if it's under here, but the beach permits. I don't know where she carries that, is that under summer salary?
Summer salaries, yeah.
All right, if you look at, there's a spreadsheet she put up, but she ended up losing like 2800 on that. That account. And it was because of not selling enough beach passes to cover the wages.
Well, she's coming in tonight for the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
And she's got a whole PowerPoint on that.
Yeah, if you keep going down the line, I think it's near the end. But, I mean. And that's going to be another thing. Are the beaches going to open and if they do, what kind of restrictions are we going to be here?
Yep, yeah, we don't know.
Yeah.
You know, it's the first year of the program, it does take a while to get going and we can always make adjustments too.
Yeah.
Anything else on beach and rec?
No.
Library, they, they're pretty much the same, I think, except for the salaries. I believe everything was the same.
Okay.
Erica?
All good.
P and Z, they did have a meeting last night, I was on it for two and a half hours. They did talk about having a clerk again. And they were, they wanted to get that $1,500 back in there. Not sure if they're going to use it, but they'd like to have it just in case they do.
It might be a good move. Because are they getting a chairman change over there?
I think they had a change last night, it might be, I think it might be Kevin Curley and Dave Wig as co-chairs.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and Bob McIntosh will move to secretary.
I think they need a clerk.
Yeah.
I mean.
I think you're right, Erica, well, you would know more, you were.
Yeah, I mean, I was the one who moved to get rid of the clerk at the time, it was the right move for us then, the board make up the way it is, but. You know, I know Dave travels a lot, Kevin is sort of new to town government and his first chairman, I think it's a lot to ask. To do both jobs really, so.
Okay, anything else on P and Z?
No.
Tax collector. This is where we're looking to give the clerk a raise of two, well, it would be two and a quarter. Percent. She's held her budget pretty good. And it's kind of nice working with the two other towns that she's able to split her training costs between all three towns.
Yeah.
And the, actually, the tax collector clerk is certified now as a tax collector. Working out very well. Good there?
Yeah, can you just make a note, Tom, nothing to do with the budget. But if you could ask John McKenna to put an article in about our tax deferment.
Yes.
Because I see every town in this Florence paper has put one in there.
Yep, I saw that.
A lot of people do not go on our website.
I will mention that to them and try to get them to do an article or sidebar.
Let them know that we are doing something.
Yep, and we'll get it out there too, on like Facebook and try to, the more people that know, the better.
Yeah, well, to make them feel easier.
Yep. Treasurer. This one, currently the treasurer's position is open and we've, we posted it once, we didn't get very much feedback on that. So we just posted it again, we've probably gotten in, I don't know, six or so. You think? Applications. And I did put a range there from 30 to $40 an hour. High end obviously is 40, we'd like to try to keep it below that, I felt it was necessary to have a range to hopefully attract the right person to the job. I think Nancy is currently at 35 as the deputy treasurer. And we put that in there in case the treasurer goes on vacation. We've been fortunate with Nancy where she would take long weekends instead of like a vacation, a real vacation. And if the fiscal clerk goes on vacation too, someone needs to do his job and it'd be good to have a deputy treasurer. That can fill in for either one of the positions. And that way you keep your separation of duties going between the two positions. Other than that, it kind of is what it is.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
This is a V and A, which we generally don't quite hit 700, depends on the year visiting nurse. Wetlands, nothing changed, I believe. And Mike Doyle felt comfortable with it. ZBA, just an uptick in the legal, you know, they do have some, a pending case, I guess, that they feel could cost some money in legal. Hopefully it's over before the end of the, this fiscal year, but you never know. And Alan Bernardini felt comfortable with what was there. Town clerk, she kept it pretty flat, the only thing we're looking at, I believe, is wages. Assessor, same thing. And she's getting a lot done for us on the GIS, hopefully we'll get the town's maps. Into a GIS format, it's kind of something we really have to do now, especially with Homeland Security and emergency management. They're all utilizing the GIS maps, mapping of the towns in our area. And we're pretty far behind on that. But she's been able to work this within her current budget. To get a lot of this work done, plus we're working with the Northwest Cog on it too. Anything there?
No.
I think this went down just because of the propane and finding what's really costing the heat this building. I think everything else was the same.
Did we lock in propane prices?
We have not. And that's something I'll reach out and check with some companies and see what, what they're doing with propane, would be nice at this time. I mean, oil is incredibly low.
Yeah. Oil, did we lock in any of those?
Yes.
Okay.
But what was nice about the lock-in is we did lock in at $1.99, which at the time it was a great, great price. But they can lower that in the contract. So if they buy now, we could do pretty well. Anything on community hall?
No.
General Government. The administrative assistant. That increase. Trying to see if there's anything outstanding. Added employee training, we're starting to see a lot of more, a lot more required training for employees. And we will take advantage of all the free training that's out there, either through CCM or. I think CHRO is doing the sexual harassment training, it's free online. So we are trying to utilize as much free as possible. But there are a lot of things I'd like to keep our employees up to date on, especially AED and a CPR, all that. And other ones that will come up that will be mandated by the state. You see anything else that stands out?
No.
No.
Board of Health, basically what it is, Tarifarian Health District. Mental Health Board. They've been kind of flux lately, but I'd like to leave them in there when they get reorganized. And we do the donations to Susan B. Anthony Fish and Greenwood's. And they all do service clients in our town. Highway. Not a lot of changes there.
Well, I, one question, Tom.
Yep.
Where's the chore program?
That's a good question. Oh, down on, almost at the bottom of this one, general government.
Okay. I just didn't want to leave it out.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they end up going down, less people utilizing it in Morris.
I need to make sure there was money in there for them.
Yep.
I didn't see it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't see a lot, a lot of big changes at the highway. They did get rid of cable, they use a fire stick now. Which helped. Anything there?
What about salt and sand, should we have a surplus of that?
We probably will. And they'll be, you know, this year we'll have the surplus, hopefully salt and sand and maybe the emergency overtime.
And what about diesel?
It's a good possibility.
Still carrying the 50,000 for salt and sand.
All depends on the year.
Yeah, but should we have a surplus this year to help us into next year?
Well, we'll probably have, because you don't buy, we can't buy it all at once because of the size of our salt shed.
Yeah.
We have plenty of sand, it's the merit of the salt and. Since you didn't buy it all at once, there'll be a surplus in money left over. Not a heck of a lot of salt, no more than usual at this time of year, because he just didn't purchase it, so the money will be there as a surplus. And that'll go back into.
Yeah.
One balance.
It's just the, the Board of Finance is going to need some areas to go back to.
Yep.
Keep this budget flat. So.
They did have Lou and I think it was last week and talked to him, they're definitely going to go back and look at these budgets once they get to the bottom line.
Yep, no, I understand.
Loosip. We're getting about $22,000 a year from the state for Loosip. Insurance did go down again, this is for the motor vehicle liability and property and workman's comp. So we saw a good savings there. Tree warden, Memorial Day. 911. Yeah, I don't know if you see anything there.
No.
We don't see much here, it is what it is based on the wages. Streetlights. Oh. This one, Board of Selectment Safety Regional Responder Support. The fire company is part of the Region Five Dive Team now, you know, they're two separate organizations. And the dive team, we probably have. At least eight people involved from Morris in the dive team. And the dive team does need funding, they need to have their own insurance and, you know, purchase their own equipment. Since this dive team does respond quite a bit up in this area and we respond with them to other areas. We felt that perhaps we should support that team, now this is something. Definitely up for discussion, we didn't come to the Board of Selectmen before, so it is here now. Any thoughts?
I think.
$6,000?
2,000.
Oh, two, I come.
Should say two.
Well, yeah, good, it's just.
What do you think, Vinnie?
Well, they are dive team and they do need equipment, I mean.
They asked all the member towns to throw in.
I think we have to put some money in there.
Well, if we put in two and see what the Board of Finance does.
Okay.
Anything else there?
No.
No.
Dog warden. It's kind of an odd one, well, the contract changed and we can get a dog warden as a per diem basis. So I think one of our near. So I think at one of our near future Board of Selectmen meetings, we could sit down and kind of work that out, what we feel is appropriate. Perhaps we'll have some information of what other towns are doing, uh, that do the same type of setup that hopefully we will be doing. And
Have you been acting dog warden?
Oh, it's been a year and almost five months.
What's the average call rate for that?
About once a month. And usually it's a, uh, missing dog or a found dog. I had a couple raccoon and skunk incidents, one possum incident. So it's something we really gotta talk about.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, it's, it's its own issue, I guess, so. Not for today, but.
You okay with that, Vinnie?
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I, I'd be curious to see what other towns do because I mean, it's our right to get the calls, but what happens if we have an incident? Do we have the proper training or cages to do whatever we have to go?
Right.
You know, that, that would be the only thing. And, uh, I mean, we had an incident here about a week and a half ago. Uh, Fox, two days in a row came up on our porch. And now it disappeared. I haven't seen it since.
Yep.
But, uh, yeah, that's something we could discuss later on, I mean.
Okay.
Do we have to carry any money in there?
I would, just in case, just so we.
Is that the fourteen thousand or?
Ten thousand.
Ten?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Okay. Bill Inspector, he didn't change at all. And there again, there wouldn't be a raise because he gets the, uh, the twenty flat rate plus his percentage of the, uh, permits.
Yeah.
Transfer station. Some changes, uh, obviously the wages. He had put in six thousand dollars for a chipper for the brush. My feeling is if we can continue to burn and we have the manpower there anyways, let's keep burning while we can. And then we'll have to worry about renting a chipper a couple of times a year to take care of the brush.
Okay.
Uh, recycling. Yeah, we're not gonna get away from the increases.
Well, after all this is over with and we can really sit down, uh, there are some programs that I know you mentioned some time that we could look into to further our recycling.
Correct, yep.
So, I mean, we can't do anything with it right now with all this stuff going on, but it'll be something that we can look into.
Yes, definitely. Senior Center, uh, again, I put in for that, I mean, you're talking thirteen dollars an hour for the, uh, help down there.
Yeah.
And I didn't see much different there. One thing that we might be looking at on most of the municipal buildings, except for the pavilion, is a decrease in the cost of, on our electric bills. We've been carrying that loan that we programmed that we got into for the, uh, LED changeover for all the buildings. We did it like almost five years ago. And we should see that loan coming off of our, uh, electric bills for most of the buildings. So I'm hoping to see, or we will be seeing, a decrease in the electric bills at most of the buildings. And that's about it. Are we good as is? Do you feel?
Do we, do we have a number?
No. Totals. We have it last year with the adjustments that includes the, uh, retro two and a half percent pay increase was nine million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty. So this year, the way it is, we're looking at eight hundred, eight million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-one. And one of the main reasons is, let me go back to the beginning. I forgot to mention it. Uh, education.
Yeah.
With the, uh, over, a little over three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar, uh, less that we'll be paying as our normal allotment to Region Six. They also kicked back kind of a one hundred and sixty-one thousand plus dollars to us that came off of this next year's, uh, bill, so to speak. So it's quite a savings there. And we went from, uh, five million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand to five million, four hundred and seventeen thousand. That's a pretty good decrease. So like Vinnie was saying before, if we can, I mean, I personally, I think we can almost reduce the mill rate a little bit and properly fund everything. But one thing we're gonna have to worry about is our collection rate. Right now, we, I think we've, in the current year, we figure ninety-eight point two-five percent. Talking with Rebecca and Nancy, they were thinking for next year, or next fiscal year, maybe more like ninety-six percent. So we gotta be aware that all that money may not be there next year. I mean, some people may not be able to pay those taxes next year.
Yeah. Well.
That's why if we can keep, keep it tight and hold the line everywhere we can, I think it's, we'll have a good budget.
I definitely, I mean, there's no extra in this budget and it's all very fair as presented, so. I think it's.
It's, it's a good budget and uh, you know, Tom is right with the, with the collection. But people are gonna look at five hundred thousand turned back from the school roughly. That's almost a mil and a quarter. So we have to either, like you said, Tom, if we could drop the mill rate a little bit, but we definitely have to keep it flat.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it can't go up.
Yeah.
It can't.
I mean,
It shouldn't.
Really, the Board of Finance this year has a really easy task because of the, the school budget.
Yep.
In previous years, we were always fighting the school budget and that was our biggest headache right there.
Yeah, uh, and it's looking like next year that our, uh, enrollment will probably remain pretty flat. Or go down a little bit, but it, so we're looking, according to Chris Leoni, we're not looking at a increase in our allotment next year, but that can change any time through the year. Depending on students moving into Morris or out of Goshen or, or whatever. So I think in next year, we'll still be in a good position to maintain a, a good flat mill rate, hopefully.
Wow.
But we have to plan for the future, definitely.
Yep, nope. So do you need a motion to send it for?
Yeah, I made a motion to approve as
Pro.
To recommend to, uh, to Board of Finance.
Yeah, I can make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Vinnie made the motion. Erica seconded it. Any other discussion on all this? All those in favor?
Aye.
All approved. Um, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Erica made the motion. Vinnie seconded it, uh, one forty-nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Bye.